Motion to approve.
Is that moved?
All right. Moved by Kate, second by Asim. All in favor? Aye. Move on to the comprehensive plan topics, which I believe you want to do an intro first.
I can do an intro.
Okay. I guess what I would just say before we jump into that is that, like I said before, if folks who show up could sign in either now or before they leave, that's great. There are also some refreshments and snacks up in the front, each corner. Make yourself available to those. There was a session for a couple hours earlier today. We have this one, and then next week, obviously, there's going to be a similar session in the afternoon, or in two weeks, sorry, another one in the afternoon, and then again during our planning meeting. So this will be the second of kind of four opportunities for people to weigh in on this. We'll let Dean take it from there.
Thank you, Andrew.
I'm going to leave the lights on the way they are. This projector's a lot brighter than the old one, so I think this is going to work out okay. I'm going to take just a couple of minutes to give people an orientation to the laws that allow municipalities to have comprehensive plans and specify what the plans need to conclude, and then talk a little bit about the current town plan. There are materials. There are black and white copies that are of the sections of the plan that are up for discussion tonight. Basically, the entire plan is up for discussion, but we highlighted certain sections that we're going to focus on. And so that's in the black and white copies. The colored copies are copies of the entire plan. We'll make additional copies for people if you want one. I just was going to do an initial run of four, but if you'd like a color copy and you weren't able to get one, let me know. And if people really want to see the color copy, just share them and then get it back at the end of the meeting. Okay? So, just some really basic stuff about what a comprehensive plan is. A comprehensive plan is often described as a blueprint for a community, but that term doesn't really mean a great deal to a lot of people, I guess unless you're an architect or a builder. And it also doesn't really help us because a comprehensive plan has legal standing. It does certain things that are legal in nature. We have to have a comprehensive plan if the town wants to have land use controls like zoning regulations. If we would like to have a say in certain state reviews, like Act 250, Act 250 is a land development review process, we need to have a comprehensive plan. So, it's a blueprint, but it's more. Shelburne is unusual among Vermont communities because it's had a comprehensive plan since the 1960s, and it's also had zoning from the 1960s. It's a community with a lot of experience when it comes to adopting comprehensive plans and the bylaws that implement them. The current town plan, which was adopted completely in 2014, will expire in 2019. The state law that governs plans has for many, many years said that if you don't adopt a new town plan at least once every five years, then the plan that you have expires. That law has changed, so when there's a new town plan adopted in Shelburne, it will have a lifespan of eight years. That's something that other communities that have adopted their plans before us are already involved in, but Shelburne hasn't reached that point yet. So the next plan will be for eight years, not five. The contents of the town plan are spelled out in state law. I'm not going to drag you through that unless someone really wants to... You want me to? But the broad strokes are that the state law says that town plans have to have certain sections. It has to have a land use section. It has to have an education section, a transportation section. I'm not going to rattle all of them off. There are, I believe, 11 total. And the statute also spells out that the plans are to be prepared consistent with state planning goals. And the state planning goals are things like the plan for a municipality should maintain the historic land use pattern of concentrated village surrounded by open countryside. That's the kind of stuff that happens in the state goal. But again, the basic requirements are set forth in state law, but the way that communities meet those requirements varies widely, and you'll see more about that. There are some things about the comprehensive plan that the Planning Commission has prepared for you and has prepared for the town that are kind of optional in nature. There is the opportunity for towns and cities to adopt plans that will have more impact. They'll be given more weight in those review processes that I've talked about if they have more things in them. And the comprehensive plan draft that the Planning Commission has prepared has a lot of information in it about energy, and the reason is because the Planning Commission hopes for the new town plan to have additional weight in the state review process that is carried out by the Public Utility Commission. We used to call them the Public Service Board. So there's some optional elements. There's also something called regional approval, and if we want to get regional approval, we have to make sure that we do certain things. But basically, it means that we're doing a bit more, the Planning Commission is doing a bit more, and the community is doing a bit more work than some other towns would have to do. I've already covered this, so I'm going to skip. There is a document that's mentioned in state law that's called the Vermont Planning Manual, and it's basically a book with advice on town plans. And in the current version of that planning manual, it talks about how it's a good idea for comprehensive plans that are prepared to focus on achieving a vision for the future and not documenting the past or spending a lot of space and time doing that. It also talks about structuring the plan around big ideas, using maps and graphics, and taking out unnecessary information. I will say, on behalf of the Planning Commission, or maybe at the risk of offending the Planning Commission, there was a goal set when the plan update process started to take the current town plan, which I'm going to come over here and just wave around. So you'll see, it's pretty basic, black and white, with a lot of pages in it. It comes in two primary sections, and the goal the Planning Commission had was to make the document more attractive, more readable, hopefully shorter. But that's not always easy to do. So because there are all these requirements, you have to have all of these sections, you're trying to meet all of these goals, it can be hard to make it fit in 100 pages. That was, I believe, the target or the upper limit, and that's how long the current draft is running about. So I'm going to just, if there are any questions about the basic statutory framework, I'm just going to talk a little bit about what's in the current draft of the town plan. And I should have also said, in addition to the fact that there are copies of the town plan draft, they're on the tables, there are some sections or certain pages that were printed out and stuck on the walls. I'll say a little bit about the maps. The maps that are in the draft are really placeholders, and we can talk about that a little bit more. But diving in. The plan has to have a lot of topics in it, or address a lot of topics, and we've divided them into different categories. So tonight, the idea is that it would be an opportunity for people to talk about the overall vision for the town, the future land use section of the document, the natural resources section. There's a growth and development section that encompasses a couple of different things, including economic development, the recreation section, and a childcare section. And the idea that I've got for right now is to just show you the tip of the iceberg regarding those pieces. The vision statement in the comprehensive plan was expanded a bit by the Planning Commission, and I've made some bullets that highlight pieces of it. It's written in a vision-ish approach, so it talks about what the community will be like at some point in the future. So it says, "In the mid-21st century will be a place where, through careful and inclusive planning, residents will have thoughtfully guided the evolution of the community." So we will have done a good job. But more important than that, it'll be a place that embraces economic vitality of the greater Burlington area while maintaining a strong village center and large areas of conserved and rural lands around it, and a vibrant and diverse economy and attractive working landscape. The idea of a vibrant village core surrounded by open countryside or rural lands is a feature of Shelburne plans that go back many, many years. So I'm going to let you glance at the rest of that. Are there any questions about the vision? Oh, okay. The future land use section is, in some ways, the distillation of one aspect of the plan, and by that I mean the aspect of the plan that says what should be where. The future land use section has a map, but like all of the other sections, it has goals, objectives, and recommended actions. That's the basic format that's used in the comprehensive plan. It's the basic format that was used in Volume 1 of the current plan, and it's kind of like you would expect. Goals, the big picture, objectives, more specific, and the recommended actions are really instructions to the community about the things that the community should do. So as far as future land use is concerned, the goal, as written in the current draft, is to pursue future land use based on placemaking. "Placemaking is the process of creating quality places where people want to live, work, play, and learn." Thus, an explicit aim of the future land use section of the plan is to promote the creation of these quality places. So I won't go into all of the subbullets, but the idea of placemaking is something that is a new addition to the draft plan, and it's an important unifying concept in the plan. An objective that I called out, just to expose people to the plan, is to reinforce compact and prominent village center and the more densely settled portions of the town, "And those shall contrast with rural lands that feature lower density development and a diverse mixture of open lands, agriculture, and natural areas." So it's a refinement of this idea that I just got out a little bit earlier about the village and the surrounding area. This map is the working version of the future land use map, or one of the maps in that series. The current town plan has a similar map. We call them planning areas, and the planning areas signify these different levels. There's a growth area 1, which is the area surrounding the historic village core. That's in red. Beyond that, in the kind of mustard color, is what we call growth area 2, and the boundaries of growth area 2 line up with something that has existed in Shelburne for a couple of decades, which is the sewer service area boundary. We have sewer plants in Shelburne. You can't just run a sewer line anywhere in Shelburne. According to the rules that we have in place, there are boundaries, and there's a map that sets those boundaries, and the future land use map, the growth center 2, matches that, essentially. Beyond that, beyond the growth area, we have the rural area. That's in the light green or off-white color. And then finally, we have a conservation area. This is something that is now included in this planning areas map that is not in the current version of that map. And those areas are places where it might be owned by the town, or it might be owned by the University of Vermont or the Nature Conservancy for conservation purposes. And for now at least, it also includes places that are lots that were created as part of developments that are set aside as open space. They might not be protected in the same way that land owned by UVM or the Nature Conservancy is protected, but it's not up for development, in short. So that's the future land use map that's in the proposed plan. So leaving future land use, the next section up is natural resources. It's, I believe, the longest section in the draft plan. It's a section that has had a pretty substantial rewrite with the involvement of the Natural Resources Committee. I should add that there's been a lot of contribution on the part of different committees and subcommittees, including the Bike and Ped Committee, the Housing Subcommittee. So it hasn't been all on the Planning Commission to help write these, but the Natural Resources Committee has been very involved in this section. The goal that I'm highlighting is written as "to identify, conserve, and manage Shelburne's natural and scenic resources so that they may be protected and enjoyed now and in the future." That's not earth-shaking for a natural resources section of a plan, but there it is in black and white. The objective that I called out brings that to bear by saying that those resources should be protected by using zoning and other regulations like subdivision. So assure that the zoning bylaws and subdivision regulations achieve the goal of the natural and scenic resources section of the plan. So it's a call for the regs, the regulations that we have in town, to line up with this goal, to make sure that we identify, conserve, and manage the natural and scenic resources so that they're protected for the future. As I said, it's the longest section, so it's really hard to boil down to one slide. Yes, Judy?
We've got a lot of development that didn't used to be here, and I noticed, like, Webster Road, I don't know what's happening over there, Quiniasca Golf Course, but you've got a lot of big houses so close together. And how does that preserve the natural scenic beauty of Shelburne when you've got such tight... I mean, does this affect what developers can and cannot do, is my question?
It's one step removed, is I guess the way I would answer, because the town plan is the document that helps the Planning Commission decide what's in the regulations. And the regulations are what determine, more specifically, they determine what the developer will be able to do. So if this plan becomes the plan for the town, and the features on a map like this become the comprehensive plan, then one of the things that the Planning Commission will be doing is looking at them and lining them up.
So that could be controlled by lot sizes that they're allowed to have, or what?
Well, the thing that I would say with, you mentioned the Quiniasca project, and one thing that people need to understand about the Quiniasca project is that it's within the sewer service area. So it's within the growth area. It's in the area that the plan says should have more houses in it than the area beyond. So that's one part of the answer I would give you. And yes, as far as setting densities of the number of houses per acre, the town plan doesn't typically say how many units per acre. That's not what a town plan normally does, but the zoning regulations do that, and the Planning Commission has conversations regularly about what and if the density should change.
Only thing I'd add, too, would be the activity you see on Webster Road now at Quiniasca is actually more golf course holes being carved out to increase...
Yeah, I had seen about that earlier, because I was noticing that today, and I thought, oh, I thought it was supposed to be on the west side.
Right.
And not on the east side, but this is on the east side.
Yeah, because they're losing that land soon, they're putting the holes on that side. So, you know, what's going to end up, I think, having the bigger impact for people is what happens on the other side of the road in the near future.
That could be in the Shelburne news, by the way. Somebody I call Mike Doherty.
Well, there's been an article in the Free Press about the Quiniasca project. There was something on Channel 3 also about the Quiniasca project, so there is some attention, but maybe, well, the Shelburne news came out today. I haven't seen it. So I'm just trying to plow ahead here. The natural resources section of the plan, as I said before, the convention is goals, objectives, recommended actions. The recommended actions tell us things that we, as a community, need to do. That advice that I mentioned from the planning manual talks about graphical information or graphical display of things. There are 12 maps at this point that would be incorporated. There are, I believe, four that would be in the natural resources section. This is one of the examples. It's a map that is a placeholder for what will eventually be in the plan that was created by the Natural Resources Committee, but it gives you just some understanding that the document will have maps in it that show things like different types of wetland, which have different type of habitat values, core forest, and so on and so forth. And I will just, since, on the subject of maps, understand that we're creating a document that historically people read on paper. Now, most of us are comfortable with reading things on a computer screen. When it comes to maps, we're working with the Regional Planning Commission, and some of this will become news to the planning, some of this will become news to the Planning Commissioners, but the Regional Planning Commission will help us by creating a site, essentially, where people can go and look at maps that are specific to Shelburne, and will be able to turn on and off. So all this stuff that I'm showing you here, it'll show up as a page in the plan, but it'll also be something that you can look at online, and you can combine with other layers. So cruising along, growth and development. This is the section that I mentioned earlier, has language in it about economic development, but historically, it's also been the section of the plan that addresses public facilities, so water and sewer service and things like that. The goal that I was going to share is, it's written as "to provide in a cost-effective manner town utilities, facilities, and services consistent with the plan, rates of population, housing, and economic growth." Shelburne's plans in the last many years have emphasized this idea that it's not a community that wants to be thought of as building all kinds of facilities to bring growth in. It is a community where the facilities will be developed in combination or as the growth comes in. So this idea of "consistent with the plan, rates of population, and housing growth," the policy in the town has been not to have facilities be triggers for rapid rates of growth, but to have facility development and growth be in line. I guess that's the easiest way to say it. Another thing that's happened in this section of the plan over the last many years is some kind of measure of how fast we grow. Many, many years ago, it was as a percentage rate. The current town plan is talking about the rate of growth and expressing it in terms of the number of dwelling units, so between 25 and 50 new dwelling units per year, and that is really within the range of the number of houses that have been created in Shelburne on average over the last several years. I threw in another goal, encourage the continued growth and diversification of Shelburne's economy in a manner that enhances the well-being of the community, does not detract from the overall character. So there is material about facilities and about economic development as well. Parks and rec, almost done. Parks and rec in some other communities is included with other types of facilities, like the libraries and police and fire, but Shelburne has had a history of having its parks and rec dealing covered in its own section, and that continues. So the goal is to continue to provide high-quality and accessible parks, facilities, and rec programs to all residents at a reasonable cost. And another goal, encourage the retention of outdoor rec opportunities on private lands. And then there's an objective that relates to paths and trails. As I was explaining to some folks earlier today, this is a part of the plan that overlaps a bit with the path section of the transportation chapter. And finally, some for tonight in terms of sections. The state statute that governs the preparation of plans has a requirement for municipalities to include language that addresses a state goal on childcare. And so when that goal was added, the plan was amended to have a childcare section. It's a very short section, but because we would like our plan to pass muster and have these regional approvals so that it has more weight and so on, we have that section in order to address the statutory requirement. It's really not, it's hard, who would argue with encouraging the availability of safe, affordable, and adequate childcare? It's something that, it's something that the workforce needs, essentially. "Integrate childcare issues into the planning process and the sample objective. Encourage creation, expansion, and continuation of childcare services in a variety of settings." And I used the example earlier today that, well, I mentioned that it's difficult for Planning Commissions to know what to do with childcare. It's just not a place that the public sector, at least on a town level, has a lot to do. But this Planning Commission was approached last year, a year and a half ago, because there were operators of childcare facilities in Shelburne who needed to expand, and the zoning regulations, as they were written several years ago, had a cap. And as a result of the request and looking into it and understanding that whatever impacts are felt as a result of childcare facilities, they were addressed by other aspects of the regs that the cap didn't have to remain. So I think that was an example of where, if someone was to ask, well, why, you know, why treat that type of use specially? You know, why give them a break? Why take off that cap? You can look at the language in the town plan that encourages the creation of childcare opportunities and have a rationale for that. So, closing out, to sum up, some of the significant changes to the plan. It's been redesigned. We worked with, and are working with Maya Smith, who is a graphic designer who's helped communities prepare updated town plans that have won awards. And Maya is helping with the redesign, and there are more, it's a more attractive document than the black and, the gray lady, I guess I could call it, over there and was waving around. It's proposed to be a single volume rather than the two volumes. It will not have a second component that has a lot of background material. It's got an emphasis on placemaking, this idea that was captured in one of the first goals that I read you. There's more emphasis on conservation in the future land use maps. There's more of that area that's shown in green that I talked about. And then in general, there's, I think, greater emphasis on natural resource protection, and there's also, and I didn't talk about it before, but if you look in the growth and development section, some of the new, the limited amount of new language in that deals with stormwater, because I think most people know that as a result of state and national laws, the town has to deal a lot more with stormwater, as do all the communities around Lake Champlain, in order to try to clean up Lake Champlain. So I think that is my spiel. And if you want to pose or tee things up and find out how people would like Shelburne to grow, we can do that.
Would it be worth you commenting on what you heard earlier? Would that help people?
Yeah, I can find my notes. Yes. And actually, some of the people who were here this afternoon, or, yeah, some of the people who were here this afternoon are back. Gluttons for punishment. Yeah, I hope I'm not glossing things over, but the reviews were pretty good. Opening night was well-received. There were very positive comments about the design and the clarity of the vision and the values in the plan. Yeah, I'm seeing that the limits of my notes here, but I would say that overall, people were impressed and pleased and in agreement with the vast majority of the comments that are, or the policy statements as they're written. There were some questions that I think show areas where the town plan, as part of this rewrite, there hasn't been a lot of work done, so specifically on the non-bike ped transportation side. You know, people wondering, you know, how much more can the community take as the volume of traffic on roads like Spear Street goes up and up? There was some discussion about that and kind of a counter, not argument, but recognition that we also need to be thinking about ways to get people out of cars and expand public transit, or have public transit available so that people wouldn't necessarily have to be in their cars. Judy? Whoops. I mean, yeah, I guess if anybody was here this afternoon, Josh, you were... I guess if they don't want to chime in, maybe Judy does, so...
Affirm, affirm what Dean is saying, which is that people expressed gratitude for the plan and appreciation for all of... plan and appreciation for all of that's in it. And then, which Dean didn't get to yet, people also expressed concern with making most of the plan actually happen when there's so much in it and so many objectives and recommendations. And I think that people expressed a wish and a hope that we would find a way to prioritize so that some of these aspirational things can become real.
That hits the nail on the head. The end part of the session really was about the realities of managing the implementation when there are so many recommended actions. It's really, it's really, you know, if everything's important, nothing is important. So finding some way either after the plan is adopted to winnow it down, or to some degree as part of the final steps.
I have a couple of comments. Do I have to stand?
You don't have to stand.
Okay. My name's Judy Fraser. I grew up here in Shelburne, number one. And some of the things that I've seen as the town has changed, because it was primarily farmland and the town center was pretty much followed what's in the town charter from the town's Hampshire land grants. There were sections of that that told what had to be where, like for religious people and stuff like that. Anyway, two concerns that I have. When I was at UVM, I lived here at home, and I commuted on Spear Street for four years, from '62 to '66. That was probably one of the most beautiful picturesque views in this part of the state of Vermont. Today, it is disgusting. I could drive up Spear Street to UVM. The land was level with the road. You could see the Green Mountains, Mount Mansfield, Camel's Hump on one side. You could see the bay, the lake, and the Adirondacks. You drive up now as a passenger, so you can watch and look, and there's nothing there. They've built the land up. The size of these houses is ridiculous. You drive through green hills. I remember when that was built, hillside, I was teaching at CDU, right, Dick? And when that whole development was put together. We need to make sure that the views of the beauty that makes this part of Shelburne so nice is not taken over by people who can afford to build up the land and put a big house on it and block the views. I think that is something that has got to be watched, and I'm really worried about Shelburne becoming a Spear Street. It's disgusting. The second thing in...
Is there a better view that you think is most valued? I mean, it would be good if there's an iconic view that remains that you think the plan should identify.
Well, we're sharing with South Burlington, obviously by the boundaries that are drawn, but you know, you don't want houses, the houses along Spear Street used to be like one level. And now they're, some of them are, those townhouses are like three and four levels. I think we need to watch stuff like that. There are some nice ones if you continue down Spear Street into Charlotte and down. You know, there's a lot of nice, I mean, you go down Bostwick Road, you get a beautiful view there, but that's because the estate has not built up on it. You wouldn't want to block something like that. And I think if you do have to put something up, it should be masked by trees or something. I mean, you come up Route 7 like a tourist, you see Charlotte, and it's beautiful. There's a farm, cows grazing, and you drive over the town line, and what do you see? The teddy bear factory. I mean, that's not Vermont. And yet, as you're coming up, you can see the bay and you can see the lake. You've got to think about the tourist industry, too. And I think, you know, if you want to have growth and you want to have businesses, you've got to put yourself in other people's positions. And the other third thing, since we're the second oldest state in the country, the terraces is a very nice, affordable, senior housing project, and it's right in the village. Not everybody wants to live at a Wake Robin or a Shelburne Bay, because it's more of a community. They want to have their own ownership. They want to be able to be near the village so they can get to things. So I think you need to think about seniors a lot, because you're in Chittenden County and more people are leaving. I mean, even our select board chair came from Maine, so, which is the first oldest state, maybe didn't want to, but this is the kind of things that need to be considered. Go out walking sometime. I mean, you know, I rode my bike down to Shelburne Point. We used to roll out to the bay and sunbathe off a water ski jump. We used to sleep camp out at night on the beach, where the beach is now. You know, I grew up on Harbor Row. We'd walk across the field, go down through the woods, we'd go fishing. You know, we just, it was our playground. And all that is kind of being neat in a way, because people got to have their own little power structure house. And I don't think that's what is good for Shelburne. Now, I'm going to be 74 tomorrow, so you guys go do what you want. But I just wanted to give you my thoughts, having grown up, and I've traveled a lot in the world. I've lived in four other states. And all I can say is, my heart was always here in Shelburne, especially watching Mrs. Webb build the museum, which was done when I was growing up. So we need to respect the past. We need to respect the beauty that's in this town. And just, you know, I'm not on the DRB. I'm not on the planning and zoning. I mean, it's not my forte, but I do love this town. I love it very much. And I want it preserved because I've got a number of great nieces and nephews living in this town. And my brother's been on the beach committee before the Parks and Recreation Committee. So, you know, just don't, if you moved here and you didn't grow up here, don't try to make it like what you left, because there's obviously a reason you left other than a new job. But, you know, kind of take a look at the lay of the land. Just like I used to say to friends of mine who were going to Europe for the first time, sit back and be patient, especially if you're in France or Paris. And just go with the flow and you'll have a better time. So I think you need to not say, well, you know, we used to do this here. Well, stop and think. Do you think it fits in with the way things are done here? That's kind of a thing that I think are principles or values that should guide the development. I mean, Dean does a wonderful job with his maps and stuff like that, but it's just the overall concept of what is the quality of life here, and not impose one system on somebody else's system, who might have a different viewpoint. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
I was just curious, Kate, given your familiarity with the idea of placemaking, do you have a 30-second blurb that you might want to offer as, you know, maybe getting at some of the issues that concerns?
Julia, I took notes all through what you were saying, and I really appreciate your comments. And I was writing down what seemed to me some of, you were almost kind of sketching out a definition of quality of life and what that means to you here. And I was writing some of those things down. One of them was common land that might be accessible, those kinds of things. And what we're trying to do, I would say in a nutshell, is try and weave some of that into this town plan, so that we're not just meeting state statues, but we're trying to make this our own here. And we love this kind of input and feedback from people in terms of what that is. You know, I think sometimes, in the past, we've had sort of outside people come in and tell us what, you know, what that means.
And it hasn't been necessarily a good fit, right? So the more we can get input
from people here, the better. And I think that will also help us be able to manage some of these, you know, eight billion recommendations that we've seemed to have come up with that, you know, seem a little bit maybe unrealistic to people.
What if you come up with categories, and then you could plug, that's just, well, this goes into, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I remember going when Martin was selling his trailer park. And I went over to the Trinity Church, and I tried to stay out of it because I didn't want anybody to think that I was speaking for him or anything like that. But I was sitting next to an elderly lady, and then guy people got a text, they all of that, I went through all this and that. And she looked at me, and this was, she wasn't an activist, she wasn't, she just said, "They don't get it. We just want a nice little cottage with a little bit of land so we can garden and grow our flowers and stuff." What you can do, used to be able to do up at the terraces. So, you know, that's, I think, if I was 50 years older and I'm now downsizing, and you know what I'm saying, if I'm a senior, or if I'm a young family coming in, maybe I'd like a place, because the houses are so close together, maybe we need a park where we have grills and things, and people can go have a picnic and barbecue. I mean, I lived outside of Washington DC for 20 years. I mean, the mall was, you know, all kinds of things were going on down there. You just go down and you see theater, you see higher entertainment at the Lincoln Memorial or something like that. So, you know, everybody just took advantage of that big space. And, you know, you've got to kind of, and the other thing is, don't condense it too much, because parking is a hell of a problem in this town. And we lost parking with railroad stops. And there's nothing more frustrating than to come down, and the library's going to be bigger, so it's going to be more people. You've got the ball games Thursday night. You've got the fire department in, and you may have meetings here. And we're even worried because I'm working the first shift at the polls Tuesday. Where the heck are people going to park to come and vote? So that's the, that's the, well, I don't know, trust the mobility aspect of things, too. It's just things that I observed that just kind of hit me going around in my daily life.
I think, I mean, my only couple of comments would be, I think, what you are concerned about are some of the things as a group we've been concerned about as well. You know, there's a bigger emphasis on looking around and saying, okay, one of the reasons we love living here is because you have spectacular views around town, and this sense of, okay, we need to prioritize some of these and preserve these.
Yep.
You know, and we don't have absolute control. You know, we can't just sit up here and decide what we think we like and no one else can do it. But what are some of the ways, the tools we have to preserve that? As well as, you know, another thing that resonated with me was that idea of, you know, coming up from town from the south, but also I would say coming from the north, or even coming in down Irish Hill. As you enter the town, that's the nicest probably entrance into town. You know, you have a pretty river crossing, and there's some old houses. And, you know, we've talked a lot about that idea of how could you enhance the entries into Shelburne to make it feel like, oh, wow, we're in someplace cool now, you know?
Well, we're lucky Shelburne Farms has preserved that. And I used to play over there. My dad worked there. My cousin Rich, my stepfather worked there. Rich worked there. I mean, you know, and I used to ride my bike. I'd go fishing over at the seawall, just ride my bike over, because in those days, anybody could go where they wanted on the left estate. So, you know, and we all knew each other, because it was a small town. But that was the kind of freedom that you just really had. You didn't have a Parks and Recs, so you didn't have a lot of program stuff. The only thing started in the 50s, was when a group of people got together. It's in the bicentennial Shelburne book, 200th that they have in the town clerk's office. And they talk about, you know, the Boy Scouts started, the Girl Scouts, the Cub Scouts, swimming lessons, because Dunbar had given us the beach. We eventually had a skating rink because Derek gave that land. And even if you go down to Newport, Rhode Island, you still have that beautiful walkway along the coastline, even those multimillion-dollar mansions are sitting right next to you. So that's the kind of thing, they didn't stop those people from having. You know, they couldn't stop that walk along there. And that's a beautiful view. So you really need to look at the forest and then figure out how the pieces fit into it that will give pleasure and niceness to the town, that's all. And still make people happy, as best as you can, Dean.
I've got, you know, you actually broached the entrances to the town, the portals to the town. Pay attention to those, because I don't think they're as great as they could be, especially coming from north, south. We have businesses languishing. We have rice lumber, which I look at. I can live with a place on the hill now. I'm kind of used to it. But I'm concerned about the old place and what great development might happen with those buildings. They probably get torn down, but I'd hate to see that, really.
It's for sale. There's a sign up there.
Yeah, it's for sale. It'd get developed and who knows what. So the commercial development to me is an issue, because it's kind of ugly. There's tons of places, it's depressing to enter from the north, because there are businesses that are, you know, languishing. So there's tons of places that are sitting empty, and, you know, or some new ones that come that don't look that great. So, you know, as far as planning goes, I think a lot of it is probably zoning, but I just want us to be aware of the commercial development as well. We speak a lot about residential development, but I think we need to be, keep that in mind, you know, in planning, as much as planning does that. And that's it.
Can we ask your name, please?
Donna Fialka.
I'm Ellen McShane. I wondered, Kate, in the definition of placemaking, if there's room to put in, from the vision, the inclusive planning? Because I love that part. I love what we're doing here today, hearing everyone's concepts. And I've been so impressed with placemaking, because it was a community-based effort. But I didn't think the definition included that piece, but it may not be appropriate to have it in there. And maybe the vision takes care of it, but I just wanted to bring that up as a point.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I guess what I would say as a, you know, chair in the meeting today, but as vice chair, is that, you know, you obviously come, so you participate, but, you know, we're here two nights every month, and it's open to the public. But I think there's probably ways we could, we've tried to set up some things at the farmer's market and other things, but I take that as a point well taken, that other ways for us to get out to places to try and gather input rather than having people come to us. You know, we rely somewhat on some of the committees that are working on some of the specific pieces, but agreed. You know, we can sometimes sit in here in a meeting, and there's five or six of us sitting around in an empty room being televised to who knows what, and wondering like, don't other people care about this? So, yeah, I mean, as a parent of younger kids, I know it's hard sometimes to get here. It's hard, you know, to make time for the meetings, but we definitely welcome as much input as we can. You know, the more direct feedback we get, the more directed we feel, the better, the more confidence we have in some of our thoughts about the town. You know, as we throw them out there and you guys come to meetings and sort of, we see heads nodding and people saying yes, or, you know, people challenging what we've said so that we have to go back and rethink it. That tends to result in definitely better outcomes than a couple of people sitting around a room and, you know, no vetting of those ideas. So definitely know that it's welcome.
Hi, my name is Tracy Bowden. I really liked the layout. I thought it was beautifully done. And all of the pictures and the graphics and stuff and maps, I love maps. I appreciate all the hard work that you have put into this. I'm not an expert by any means, but I have a question that hopefully you all can help me figure out. On page 48, with the population growth, it states that the growth rate from 1970 to 2000 was 170 persons, 107 persons per year. And then between 2000, 2010, it fell to 20 persons per year. And then later, the estimate for 2017 was 83 persons per year since 20, I'm sorry, 83 persons per year since 2010. So then down below, it says that the housing can be 25 to 50 new units per year. So I'm wondering who decides that? And with these numbers, like the 83 persons per year since 2010, to me, that's a lot less than 25 to 50. less than 25 to 50 houses, or units.
Yeah, I mean, the number is one that's, again, it's an anticipated growth trend based on regional forecasts and planning that we kinda have to deal with. So, this is definitely a number that we've bounced around a lot to try and come up with that. You know, if we're adding 80 people per year, you know, depending on your average household size, you know, those are definitely dropping to, you know, closer to two-ish versus four or five in the old days. So, we kinda felt like that was a number and we didn't feel like pinning one specific number, so tried to come up with that idea of a range.
Okay.
But it is definitely not something that we feel like we are definitely gonna hit this number and that the forecast is, you know, set in stone. It's a regional number that we try and then distill down to look at our town percentage of that and then guess as to what that will be. If you look at the data, it bounces around a lot.
Yeah.
You know, the Quiniasca development in theory is the town's growth rate every year for four or five years.
Four years, yes.
You know, so that's where we tried to look at things from a resource standpoint to know that, you know, resources would have to potentially be one of the constraints on that kind of growth if it got much higher than that.
That's the thing I was wondering about was cars, you know, because if you have, you know, 20 houses a year, you're probably gonna have 40 cars. And with the Quiniesca thing with the 99 units, that's, you know, almost 200 cars. So, I don't know if that's thought of in the picture at all, that, when, when one is thinking about the big developments like the Quiniesca one.
Yeah, for sure. And, you know, that's a good one, right? Because I actually happen to live just adjacent to that development. You know, and one of the things that's improved since we've lived there is that Webster Road bike path, which now means we take a lot more trips into town not taking a car.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the one good thing, they've, you know, agreed to develop paths along that component and through there, so it should allow kids who live further up Spear Street to be able to cut through the development sidewalks and paths there. I mean, riding on Spear Street's a little sketchy for a kid still, but that's one of the things, I think, when we talk about placemaking, one of the important pieces is that people feel safe walking, biking, and there's a real emphasis within this group to try and remove car trips as much as possible.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when we talked about, you know, we lived in DC, you know, Kate lived in DC for a long time, I lived in Seattle for a long time, you know, it was a very livable city because they had, you know, built a lot of infrastructure for walking, biking, other ways to get around town. It's now a disaster to try and get around Seattle because of the amount of total growth in cars. But, you know, if we can push some of the, those trips to other forms of transportation, it helps a lot.
Yeah, or could even the Green Mountain Transit, is that what it's called? Now, the bus, I mean, could the bus, once the 99 units get up there, can the bus route be changed at all? I mean, is that something that Shelburne can help happen for those people?
Yeah. I mean, I can jump in a little bit. The issue with regional transit, that is what Green Mountain Transit provides, is that the further afield the route goes, then the more work it is for them to integrate it within the rest of their system. There has been a study ongoing for Green Mountain Transit. I keep on wanting to call them CCTA because that's what they were known as for so many years. Looking at how they, how they operate their system and how they can make it better for more people. And one thing about transit is, is that it generally makes people happier when they have to wait less. So, the frequency of the service is an important advantage. But to do that, you have to have more buses and you have to have more resources. What their system work has been telling them is that coming down into Shelburne, there's not a lot of room or opportunity for them to expand further into Shelburne without throwing things off elsewhere in the system. So, I worked in transportation planning for about eight years as part of my work and working career. It makes me think there, it's a system that has a hub in Burlington to serve the people who are on Spear Street. It may require Shelburne to do something that gets those people from there to the core where they can then get on CCT or Green Mountain Transit because it's not realistic for us to expect that the CCTA or Green Mountain Transit system would be able to expand and incorporate those additional areas. But this type of topic has come up in the past in connection with being able to get people to Teddy Bear. Now, right, right now, there are some trips that transit goes down to Teddy Bear and they're able to do that, but that's right on the Route 7 corridor. But people at the time were talking about how could we get more people onto the buses? If there's a large enough number of people and regular riders, they can usually find a way. So, if there are 91 new homes on Spear Street and if 50 of them had people in them who were regular riders, well, they might, they might, even though it's difficult, they might just find a way to make it work with the rest of the system.
And the other piece we've tried to talk a little bit about is that, how do you combine these different modes? So, in other words, if someone lives up, you know, by Quiniesca and they want to get to the Route 7 corridor where the bus is, that's about a mile, give or take. It's not a long bike ride or scooter ride or whatever, you know, but then is there a facility there for them to safely protect and lock their bike to then be able to take the bus and then be able to get back? So, it's sort of that idea of, okay, you know, how can we improve some of the pieces we have so that it makes it easier for people to use a system that exists, but right now isn't that practical for them? So, I mean, those are some of the ideas we've bounced around is, how do you make it, make it better?
Hello, Jonathan Harris. Thank you all for your work. This was obviously quite a tome to put together, so thanks. I like a lot of the stuff in here and I want to reiterate, I think the portals to the town is a really great idea to help with the entrance transitions. I was interested in the rural area and just had a few questions or discussion points that I wanted to mention there. It seems as though the main spirit of your thinking with respect to the rural area is around, you know, keeping the land open, keeping it in agricultural use, encouraging, on page 21, you talk about encouraging resource-based uses such as forestry, agriculture, and horticulture. And I think that's, that's all great. And I would also just, I found myself wondering about, you know, places like Shelburne Farms and Bread and Butter Farm and Bread and Puppet Theater up in Glover, Vermont, which I think of as some of the most beloved rural spaces in our state. And that they're really places of culture and places of learning. And just wondering whether there's a notion of culture in the rural area that wants to be part of this plan. And thinking of, I know there's something in Shelburne now called Integrated Agriculture, which allows you to basically do cultural stuff as an outgrowth of agriculture, which is what Bread and Butter Farm does with their educational programs and their burger nights, which are so popular. But wondering if we want to make kind of culture a first-class citizen on its own, not needing necessarily to come out of agriculture, but to have its own reality in the, in the rural zone. And especially just, you know, thinking about these farms that exist throughout America now and especially here in Vermont, that are having a hard time economically, like making it all work in 2018, given the economics of food production. And so, needing to be creative and think about new models of, of land use. In, in Canada and in Europe, they have the notion of the agriturismo, which is these kind of restaurants that are often held on farms and they often have a lot of learning things associated with them. But then I even think of like the Bread and Puppet Theater I mentioned a moment ago up in Glover, which isn't agriculture per se, but it's a beautiful use of a rural landscape that is, you know, beloved by people coming from far and wide. So, anyway, I just, I just wanted to throw that out there as a, as a discussion point. I noticed that the main kind of use of the notion of culture in the plan has to do with historic culture, like historic preservation, and that's super important. But I also like to think of culture as something that can be catalyzed and encouraged as a new kind of endeavor also that speaks more to the future. So, I just wanted to offer that as a, as a point of discussion.
Big point, well taken. Yeah, I mean, I think of, just around the corner from me, too, Fisher Brothers Farm, right, is relatively new venture. Bob and Becky have built kind of a great little Berry operation and then they've added their Sisters of Anarchy ice cream and they've got movie nights, you know, they're having a big farm night this weekend. You know, we have the Vineyard obviously doing similar sorts of things. So, yeah, I don't, I don't think there's anybody here that would be against that as a concept.
You could open that up and throw it out in something and people could start thinking about it and come up with something on their own. Because you're gonna be passionate about something you develop yourself.
Yeah, well, another, yeah, another good example like that we've dealt with is the Quiniesca on the golf side. You know, they ran into an issue where they, you know, wanted to increase the, a deck, build a deck to be able to host golfers and, you know, by some of the particular language of some of the codes, that wasn't allowed because the clubhouse being a little too close to the road and setbacks and, you know, again, we don't want to stand in the way of a beloved business that's doing something cool, that's bringing joy to golfers and then adding a social component and potentially bringing them more revenue that allows it to stay as a golf course, which selfishly I'd rather have as a neighbor than another hundred and something houses over there. You know, so again, there's definitely a sense within the group of trying to figure out ways to say, okay, you know, that's not a typical rural use, but wow, that's really cool and how can we kind of support that and let that happen?
Yeah, so just thinking about like quote, be the mechanism for something like that. I mean, I know the zoning regs spell out pretty explicitly what you're allowed to do in the rural zone and it's, it's a pretty tight list. And wondering if there's, if it would be interesting to explore like a new, a new zoning classification like Rural Culture Center, for instance. And maybe there could be a description of what kind of things might happen at such a place. That was one idea. And, yeah, so I don't know if that's like too, too down in the weeds for this context, but I just wanted to plant that seed.
If I may, I think your proposal really aligns very well with the placemaking concept and this integrated notion.
And I would also want to respond to the, the portals issue, which can be also, one can think about cultural integration with the commercial zones and maybe some kind of mixed density approaches to like building some kind of cultural public spaces along with commercial, along with residential as opposed to having it just as commercial. So, I think, I think it would also help with some of the growth burdens that we are facing. So, I think it's really a great suggestion.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I think I totally love what you just said and I think that makes tons of sense. And I would also say that in Vermont, like one of the things we're so lucky to have is this incredibly beautiful rural landscape. And so, the extent to which we can use that landscape for the backdrop of our activities, including culture activities, just feels like a win for everybody. And so, maybe like, maybe segue out of that, there's another question maybe more for Kate because I know you were studying the hamlet notion and I saw that that's, that word shows up a few places in the plan, but doesn't have a ton of detail with it, at least, at least in this document. And so, I was just curious what, like what your current thinking is about how hamlets could show up in the rural zone?
Well, we really kind of are, we're conceiving of them as a mechanism for focusing some of the growth. So, you know, the sort of, I don't know, sort of cartoon idea, you know, in a nutshell of what we're trying to do is have the most concentrated growth here in the village and then, you know, bands of, of less, a little bit less dense growth in what are called the growth areas, you know, that are serviced by the sewer. That, that expensive infrastructure, you want to, you know, leverage that as much as possible. But those areas are also within walking and bicycling distance of the center, you know? And then there are the rural areas. So, what we'd like to do is to keep those as rural as possible, to preserve that pastoral beauty that Judy was speaking about and, and also the incredible natural resources that we have here. And, I mean, you know, we decided to put on the future land use map to actually show how much land has been conserved and where it's located, just to kind of give people a snapshot of how, you know, how hard this town has worked for decades to, you know, value and prioritize conservation of those land resources. So, you know, just to kind of give that a shout out, I guess, as it were. So, so how do you, you know, to put it bluntly, how do you keep us from turning into South Burlington, right? It's just Judy's nightmare, right? Like more Spear Street, here it comes, right? So, so, yeah, so that's, that is the, the thing that, you know, keeps me up at night sometimes and perhaps my colleagues. Anyway, so how do you do that? You know, where are private property rights? We can't buy everything, we can't conserve everything. Are there some other ways besides sprawl development to focus the growth that people would find desirable and interesting? Maybe more concentrated little areas with, with some smaller places? I mean, you know, we're, we're building these giant single-family houses, assuming it's like the 1950s and everybody has six kids or something and, you know, most people don't have that, you know? There's, the, the market is, is, you know, dwelling sizes, numbers, dwelling size of families is reducing and many people are interested in something smaller and, but the market is not really offering that. So, how, how can we, you know, think a little bit more creatively about this, you know? And, and so anyway, so that was what was in there. But, you know, this is kind of a big, a big, would be a big change and in general, people are, you know, change is hard, you know? People need to come at it slowly, on their own terms, you know? They expect the town to be very thoughtful about how this is presented. And so, we just kind of put it in there as, here's an idea that we're thinking of. You know, we're not saying we know how to do it yet, but, but if, if people agree that this is an idea with merit that's worth exploring, maybe we can, you know, get some, some grants to study how this might happen here.
Cool, yeah, that's great. And I'll just say one last thing, fast and light. And I think like maybe on that hamlet line of thinking, maybe a intermediary step would be to explore such things as so-called pocket neighborhoods, which are, you might know, like they're kind of small cottages clustered around a common green usually, and they tend to have a common building as well. There's something like cohousing communities, there's one in Bristol that's very, very lovely. And so, that's another way to kind of, also to Judy's point, like having that sense of community and shared space and knowing your neighbors and not everyone just isolated in their micro mansion, like addicted to their screen, you know? Like having a sense of communal village life. I think we all long for that. And so, how can we create zoning ordinances that encourage that kind of growth? So, okay, here, thank you.
I love your idea. And what's bringing to mind, Kate, you'll understand this, the Sylvan Theater down at the Washington Monument. And that's a multifaceted, I mean, they have concerts there, the military would come and we'd go down at night after work. And, you know, people be flying kites around the Washington Monument, they'd be having picnics, they'd be walking up and down the reflecting pond, and the tourists are all running around, everybody's kind of messing together. So, I don't know, I, what I think is, and to have a Sylvan Theater like that, that could be used for cultural things, you could have art exhibits, you could have town picnics for different demographics, maybe like they do Back to the Beach for the beach people. You know, and I don't know, I'm trying to think. You mentioned some land, Dean, that the town owns and it's out more in the rural, you know what I'm saying? Rather than right here in the village. And I had a thought of a place, but it's left my mind right now. But, you know, kind of a multifaceted community center that could be used, you know, it could even have a little hockey rink in the wintertime where, we used to go down where the town garage is and everything, we had a hockey, we had an ice rink down there. And we'd go down, we had a little shack down there with a wood stove in it, they built a little place for us. And we'd go down there at night, we had floodlights, it's down where the town garage and all that is now. Derek Webb gave the land to the town to use it. And we had, you know, everybody in the community, we went down there. I mean, we had a ball at night, but it was better than ice skating under the bridge, which is where we used to skate, the museum bridge. But anyway, you know, it got us outside, we were having fun. And you could have a multifaceted, it could be a picnic area, it could be a ball, I know, down where all the ball fields are, is that town owned down across from the school?
Yeah, well, you're talking about...
Well, you could have built like, I like this guy's idea of a cultural center. I think that's great. The kids could, I mean, there's one play I've always wanted to have put on and that's the Indian raid over at the Bay Road Bridge. put on and that's the Indian raid over at the Bay Road Bridge, where the settlers let the Indians go up the river and then they punched holes in all their canoes and they came back and they took them out. And, you know, that's a great little skit, I would love to have a school group do here in Shelburne because it's a very important historical event here in Shelburne and, and kids would love that, you know, Indians and pioneers. So, you know, fun things like that and you could just get a committee to, or a group to say, let's all get together and toss out, okay, you like this idea, you work on that, you like this, make it a community effort, not a town pushdown, bring it up, grassroots. And we'll get wine from the vineyard.
Hi, I just want to say thanks to the planning commission for incorporating the other committees in town to do the kind of work that we're all doing collaboratively on, on the plan. And there was just one comment that I had that relates back to your comment and yours, Kate, about the map, the composite future land use map. It's wonderful to see the work that we've all done to conserve with the help of everybody in town. One of the concerns that the natural resources committee had when we reviewed this map is that it kind of equates all of the land that's been conserved in town in a way that the, the open space plan does not. The open space plan really differentiates the land that's conserved in perpetuity and the kind of land that's conserved as part of a community where it doesn't have the, the long-term protection. And it's wonderful to see what we have as sort of open spaces, but it doesn't actually, if used by the development review board and the zoning, it, it doesn't have the capacity to say how well something is protected and it doesn't protect that land that might be community land from dumping or from having people go in who are part of that neighborhood and just cutting down all the trees and, you know, making something else out of it without concern for what particular resources might be in there. So, while I love to be able to see that all this land is conserved, I just want to be sure that there's an opportunity for the DRB, once the zoning is written, to make that differentiation and to understand that while some places are protected, others aren't...
This is really just very broad, supposed, meant to be very broad brush and it, we had talked about putting some kind of an asterisk by there that would sort of, you know, say for more information or for, you know, a detailed information about the actual status of all of these parcels or something like that. So we had talked about that, but I guess it didn't make it into this sort of first go around, but Dean did show, the first map he created had all of those distinctions and it was just really busy. It was, it was just, it was just too much and what we really wanted was a quick snapshot of, you know, the places where the growth is intended, the places where it's rural, the places that have been conserved and then we'd get into, the idea was that we'd get into more detail about what that actually meant because, you know, to make any kind of meaningful, this is just very bird's eye view, you know, to make any kind of meaningful determination about a given parcel, you'd have to kind of dig down deeper, but it's just in a snapshot to show like, you know, where, because it always bothered me that we had, you know, conserved so much. I remember when the, do you remember when the, the American Institute of Architects folks came by to work on Route Seven? That was one of the, the things they were blown away by, they were like, wow, the, you know, like a third of the town has been conserved, that's amazing. And I remember thinking like, why is that not easy to see, you know, like in a snapshot? Because that says a lot about our values and, you know, what we want to try and do as a town, so that's what we were just trying to move towards.
Yeah, and I understand that and at the same time, I'm almost concerned at seeing how much land we conserve because one of the things that we hear every year when it comes to seeking funds for the open space fund, which has helped us to conserve so much of this, is how much is enough? And so I think it is, it's a very, it's a very careful balance that we have to practice to make sure, because there are folks who do think that we're saving too much or that that's an imposition. And there are real values to these properties, so I'm not, I'm not criticizing, you know, I, I've been blown away by, by the reception that we've had in, in working with you guys on, on the plan over these last months. I just want to make sure that that's the way it's perceived by the rest of the town.
I think that could, that could potentially be handled, I mean, by a different map and more in the natural resources section, you know, I mean, the, this, again, this, this idea was to kind of show in four distinct shades, kind of what things are, you know...
And I think it's not only black and white, so it's not four distinct shades.
Yeah, no, yeah, but you know, it might be, to your point, that there's a second map later on that breaks down, I mean, basically does what this does.
Yeah, and that, right, that is in the plan, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that it, it's made clear that these are not all created equal, yeah, so...
You know, the other, the other thing is, is that just, you know, we thought it would kind of support some of the idea of having contiguous parcels because that's important for resource conservation, habitat, you know, there could be some recreation path advantages, there's, there's a lot of, it's just to see everything there. So, you know, it's, part of the reason for going with this kind of format is to actually get people to maybe even read the plan for the first time, but also to sort of prompt, like, let's see your town differently, see, see the opportunities and the assets that exist here and, and maybe, you know, what can we do to sort of leverage that better? Because I, I just get very concerned that sometimes we can just be very passive and then, you know, South Burlington gets closer and closer and then we have, you know, surprise, this, a very large development wants to come in and, you know, so we, we, it's coming, you know, I mean, it, it, it is, all we can do is, we can't prevent, you know, much as we would like to, growth from happening and change from happening, but we can focus it and we can shape it. So this is our attempt to do so.
I wondered about, going back to this gentleman's comment about the cultural piece in the rural area, if on page 21, on objective six, it looks like you could just make a simple change, in the parentheses, it says, strongly encourage land uses in the rural area that are resource-based, such as forestry, you could then say agricultural, comma, horticultural, comma, and cultural. And that way you could then just have that there as a way to guide you as you're thinking about putting your other statutes and comments in place.
Number six, yeah.
of actions and other things that we can look at that. And, and you look at page 21 here, you can't quite see it here, but there's a missing photo, so I just want to take a second to make an appeal that if you guys have pictures of Shelburne that you think are representative and great, especially if you have a copy of the plan, you can see sections, some of them, including transportation, energy, some other things where we're really missing some photos. We've put a pretty wide appeal through Front Porch Forum and, you know, stories in the paper, et cetera, but we're still missing some, so if you guys have great pictures of town, have friends that are great photographers who love to take pictures of town, you know, please have them send pictures our way, because, you know, when you compare last version of the plan, which was a black and white doc, with this one, and I took a pass through kind of editing the whole document, like, straight to finish, thinking I was going to have to do a lot of work, but it was, I was joking with these guys, that it was amazing, when you took what we wrote that seemed kind of stilted and then Maya imposed this beautiful design on top of it, how much, and Jonathan will appreciate this, how much design impacts readability, you know, sort of the ability to digest it, but, you know, clearly we don't want to have blank spaces, so if people have photos, we want them. Yes, yeah, we've got a, we've got a Google, Google sheet with captions for all those, we're editing them behind the scenes and then they'll get placed in there, but yeah, definitely a missing, missing piece right now. Oh yeah, like I said, I mean, Maya ma- makes us look a lot better, you know, just by dress and dressing it up in a beautiful way, you know, just cool things, like, you know, this color palette of having a color for each section, different ways of organizing it, you know, just taking lists and kind of pulling them off in blocks and bulging them in a way that just makes it more distinct than just kind of running with text, so, yeah, it's a much more digestible document than what we just wrote in terms of words. When we've covered, I mean, are there anything, I mean, I don't think childcare is probably going to be a hot button issue for a lot of people, but are there any other of the sections that we want to talk about tonight? Recreation hasn't gotten a lot of play, is there anything there?
I have this dream for, I remember people, one thing that used to happen when it was colder, is that Shelburne Pond was this, people would get out on the ice like mad and people would be, you know, all sorts of activities would be happening and they still do, but if the weather isn't right, it doesn't, it can't happen there really, you know, we've lost some people fishing and, you know, it's been, but I, my dream is that, that, the town green, which is sort of devoted to Christmas tree selling for a large part, it seems like a, a lot of the winter, should be, we should be able to skate there. We really should, we should flood it, we should do it, kids could then be in this, so it would be a recreation opportunity, not only for kids, but for adults. People love to, you know, that's, that would draw people, really draw people to the center of town. So that's just my little, I'm glad I had a chance to say that, because for a long time I've been like, I would have flooded.
No, music, music to my ears, I'm a big hockey guy, love skate, have a little backyard rink, Kate's in fact helping me figure out how to level my backyard to make it even better for a rink. In our neighborhood, we've talked about trying to do a communal one for that reason and I think what you were talking about, that idea of like a third place...
Well, this was all in Shelburne, but we all live right here in the village at the time.
Yeah, no, but it means, but it's that idea of, like, I feel like for a lot of the town, you go, you go down to the farmer's market on Saturday morning, you run into lots of people, my kids can go down and then they're off with people, they're climbing the tree, they're playing and we see people and then, you know, the ball games do that as well, town, kids' sports, other things, unity events, you know, things might happen, but there's those six months a year that are cold and dark where you don't have that place, so I would agree, something like that, some idea of a sort of winter social gathering is, would be great.
I'm speaking for me now, not for the natural resources committee. I, I love that idea and I would like to see us try to incorporate into our zoning regs, that when larger developments come together and larger building enterprises come together that, just like we ask for paths to be incorporated, that we also ask for a common space, something like community gardens, I know that, I can never remember the names of all the developments, but down on Webster Road across from Garden Side, they have a basketball court and they freeze it over in the winter and I see kids skating there and parents hanging out and I think that's an important part of a community. So, that's just something to think about.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm still back on the inclusive planning piece. I just would like somewhere to have a comment that as you go forward, you're going to be including as many, because you're implying it, but I just, you talk about in the plan that you've really brought a lot of input from people and you have, but, and that's why I was hoping placemaking was going to catch that, you know, going forward, you're going to be community focused, getting people's input and this is a way to build community. So I don't know if you can, because even in your piece on there where it says citizen participation, it's all the past. We brought people together and this is the outcome of bringing them together, but what I've appreciated your vision is that you're really thinking about using this work to bring the community together.
Ellen, where did you, you were talking about one spot, where did you see, well, were you referring to a specific spot that you thought that should go?
Yeah, the placemaking definition was the place that I thought we might see the...
Oh, is that, Dean, is that, that's not as part of our packets, is it? That's, that was just...
Page eight.
Oh.
The other thing you're talking about is that citizen participation in the planning process section.
Right, yeah, that piece...
Yeah, that's fair.
Oh, I see, right up here, okay, yeah.
It's a good point, right, that this, this doesn't end, this document is a living document.
Because I thought maybe you had it there and so then you wouldn't need it in placemaking.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
But I just think that that's what the beauty of what you've done is and I think you've got great power in town to continue it.
Just taking that one step further, and I'm not sure that there's a place for this in the plan, but one of the things that might encourage more people to become engaged, because I've sat here at many meetings and been the only one who's not on the board, would be for the town itself to make an investment in the kind of electronic capacity that would allow people by Skype to be able to be part of a meeting even if they can't get out and, and to make things more accessible in that kind of way. At one point, we had a member of the natural resources committee who had to leave our committee because he was hearing impaired and couldn't really hear the rest of us speak and we didn't have any capacity to be able to help him participate. So, things like that and I don't know where there's a place for that in, in the town plan, which is a lot more about other things, but it does have something to do with exactly what you were talking about.
Yeah, those are, those are some great ideas. I've al- I've also seen, I guess, some kind of things used, I don't know if you can do it with maybe your cellphone or something where you can, if there's a discussion going on and you're being asked to, you know, vote on something or give your preference, you can do it, you know, in real time and then the results show up on the board, which, which I've, I've, I think is really neat because, you know, you know, some of us are more comfortable speaking out and others than others and, and sometimes I, I am quite sure that there are some very quiet, thoughtful, but maybe shy people who are not very comfortable about speaking up and, in a public meeting and, and this just seems to level the playing field. And, and anyway, I've seen it used in other communities, most recently in Winuski where they had to, they, they, they had a lot of public process to come up with, to reach the decision where they decided to bond for these big infrastructure improvements in, on their streets, in order to support the development that they wanted to see in the future. And, and so they wanted, as, as a result of this, to encourage a much more pedestrian-friendly environment and, but they were concerned about parking and, you know, all the usual things, right? And so, so it was, it was a big issue of like, well, how do we, how do we do all this? And so they just, the consultants gave everybody this technology and, and they just kind of hammered it out in these, in the course of these public meetings and they, I was amazed at, I was like, wow, we, we need that in Shelburne, you know, to, some decision-making and...
I've been at conferences where they've used that too and it's great because people can just throw out ideas as they're, as somebody else is speaking even and it, it all comes up and everybody gets an opportunity to react to it in, in the way that they want to...
Well, it just makes it very spontaneous too, because sometimes one of the most interesting things that happens is, you know, the, the proposal that, who knows, the consultant thought was going to be the one, is not what the people wanted, but something else is and, and, you know, and, and it prevents you from, you move beyond, no, we don't like that and then, okay, and everything comes to a screeching halt. It, it's like, but we would prefer this instead, you know, it lets you get to this other thing and then you can move things forward, so, you know, it just makes everything much more cost-effective.
And I think it also would encourage people to participate in a way that's not just an enemy way. a NIMBY way, NIMBY being not in my backyard, because I think what tends to happen is that the people who show up at many meetings are the ones who are against something, as opposed to people who are interested, and I, there's a lot of, a lot of, I'm not sure of the word I'm looking for, but participating in the process and being part of the community is very fulfilling, and I'd love to see other people be engaged in that.
One of the things that you could do, Dean, I have somebody that's taking notes. You might want to take some of these ideas and tie them into the categories you have in your plan, like natural resources, or you know what I'm saying, and get it in the Shelburne News, this is, you know, and we're having two more meetings, come, give us your ideas. And then you can set up some people that sit down and say, well, let's start prioritizing, but the ideas are grouped into a major broad category that might fit some of your categories in the plan. Does that make sense? And then just keep people involved, you know, come, give us your ideas. Email Dean, he loves emails. I'm just picking, I know, I'm just picking on you, Dean. Anyway, but, you know, I agree, I agree with you. It's, you know, if you're going to make change, I learned that, because I used to have to go in when I worked for IBM and change the whole structure of communications for a company after doing a study. So, there was a lot of resistance. People thought they were going to lose their jobs, but if you brought the people into the process, and it was their ideas, they were telling you what they saw were the problems in doing their jobs, and what they thought could be done better, and you incorporated that, when you went before the top management of the company for your management presentation, then they felt comfortable that you were on their side, too, and they were going to get something out of it. And so, you implement change not from top down, but from bottom up. You, that's the only way it works, I know. I got burned several times, thinking I knew it all, and I didn't. Am I doing that to your machine, Dean?
No, I think it's something to do with his phone that's on a 30-minute timer, and I think if you saw it mute for more than 30 minutes, I'm guessing it ends his call, because every time I go over to...
I mean, you're all writing notes, so you could probably all submit to one secretary to kind of, Dick will do it, Dick Elkins. I'll nominate. I had Dick in homeroom at CDU. I don't mean to embarrass you, Dick.
He was mean then, too.
Oh, man. For anybody who hasn't spoken, we don't need to make things last longer than...
They need to.
And there are more agenda items for the planning commission after, so.
Yeah, I mean, unless people, if people have other things to add, we want to hear them otherwise, we're just going to start noting the other opportunities you'd have to chime in, especially, you know, people may not have had a chance to read all of it, or read it at any great level of detail, so even those of you that were here might find something else. You do have opportunities in two weeks, two more sessions. Is it going to be three to five again for the early one?
That's the point.
Yeah, so it'll be a session three to five. Will you do it in the meeting two again? So there'll be a session in the afternoon in the meeting room there, and then the regular scheduled planning commission meeting in two weeks will be here with open comments. Jason should be back, I think I'll be gone for that one, so we're kind of musical chairs.
Only one place.
Yeah, I know.
But I think that some of the ideas they have given us today...
Great.
We'll incorporate them in the plan moving forward, and I think these are really great suggestions, and I think that will be part of the process, to take this feedback and update this.
Yeah, and just so you know that this, you know, we don't have final say on the plan, right, so it's Josh and his group that will ultimately have the say. So we can propose the plan, we have some, Dean has a great schedule laid out of kind of the process, you know, between now and February of 2019, if we don't want to have our plan expire, we have to get it approved through there. So there is a process that we will eventually sort of hand over and hopefully work with the select board to get a version of the plan. So what you see in front of you isn't necessarily what will exist, just to be candid.
And as Andrew said, the process is represented in this graphic. If everything goes to form, the plan will be adopted before the deadline. The process that the state law spells out says that the planning commission has to have at least one formal, publicly warned, public hearing. It might not be all that different from a meeting like tonight, but it has to happen after ads been placed in the paper, copies of the plans have been mailed to the surrounding communities, copies have been sent to the regional planning commission, so there's administrative responsibilities that go along with it. After it leaves the planning commission, it goes to the select board, which first has to receive it, and then they have to warn a public hearing. They actually have to conduct two public hearings before they can adopt it. If they make changes to the document, they have to warn an additional hearing, so that means that if they hold one hearing and they haven't warned a second one, they could make some changes, and then circulate the plan and warn a second hearing, and everything is fine. But they also have to provide a copy of those changes to the planning commission so that the planning commission can comment. But if no changes are made by the time the second hearing rolls around and the second hearing is conducted, then the planning, then the select board can adopt the plan, and it becomes effective immediately.
Can I ask a process question? So this, yeah. Thanks.
So, so this beautifully designed document is kind of written in, you know, something between a conversational tone and a legal tone, but then the final regs will be written in like legal language. So what's the process like to get from this to the actual zoning regs?
It's a, it's a separate process. The, the planning commission has responsibilities to both prepare and update the town plan and to do the zoning regulations. So the day it arrives and the new plan is in effect, the planning commission can turn its attention back to zoning changes. The planning commission keeps its hand involved with possible zoning changes all the time. They're going to be talking about it later tonight. I would imagine that the closer that the deadline gets, the less likely that there will be much discussion of other zoning changes, but when the new town plan is in effect, it'll be all part of the work program, and assuming that certain changes are a high priority, then they would move forward. But the steps of that process are not that different from the steps of this process. There's agreement on a text, the planning commission has a hearing, then the document goes from the planning commission to the select board, the select board has a hearing, and if they're good with it, then they can adopt it. And unlike the plan, it doesn't take effect immediately, there's an appeal period, so 21 days have to pass after the select board. But it would, I think, be a little bit of time after there's a new town plan before there, I would imagine that there could be many different possible zoning amendments. I can't begin to predict which ones would be in the package, and I think the bigger the package is, the longer it will probably take to put it all together.
But yeah, there is this parallel process of we're working on different things, you know, so if we, I mentioned that Quiniasca deck, that was something, there's a few other things, there's one we're talking about tonight, about a rural district and PUD and bisecting lots that, you know, so it's, I mean, obviously, most of our attention is on the plan at this point, it's been a weighty process, but we are talking about other things. So if there was something you were focused on that's specific about the zoning regulations, you know, that conversation could start anytime, really, you know, and be sort of hashed out in parallel to this potentially.
Got it, that's helpful. Thanks for the clarification.
Kind of a parallel question that I'm not clear about is, once a new plan is approved, and then you start working on the zoning regulations, will you be implementing new zoning regs as you develop them and bring them to the planning commission, to the DRB, or does it have to go through a two-year process while we lose a lot of the things that the plan is talking about before we can implement the new zoning regs that actually speak to the plan?
No, I mean, we can, this is the vision document, and then that, and then from this, one of the things that this does is helps us sort of set priorities, you know, so what are the glaring things, you know, what, and how do, we can come, we would have to come up with some sort of a plan for how do we tackle this, and there may be some grant monies that are available to help us with certain things. You know, like, one of the things I am itching to tackle are the public work specifications, for example, you know, which are like from the year two, and, you know, just really outdated in many ways, and don't support a lot of our stormwater management goals, you know, I mean, among other things, right, and are not place-based. So, so, but that's probably something that we would need some help with, that's an example of something we'd need some help with, but there are some other things, you know, like, for example, if you have some kind of great idea, you know, for the rural area that, you know, you've got it pretty well sketched out, don't hesitate to come, and, you know, maybe we can sort of incorporate that in, even though, you know, the, the vision for the whole rural area is really, you know, kind of still emerging, I mean, if, if you can supply one piece of it, great, you know. So we do those kind of housekeeping things, all, some of them are housekeeping, some of them are, somebody has a great idea that, like, hey, we can, this makes sense, we can wrap this in, and others are more comprehensive. So, so, but, but, you know, having the vision document is, is the key to it all, and that, that makes, I think, residents and, you know, our elected officials feel like, those people are not, they've gone off the reservation, what is this, you know, we've never seen this before. I mean, it, it will be informed by this, this vision document, it'll be an outgrowth of it. So, so that's, that's the priority for now. And then, you know, and if, frankly, if residents think that certain things should be prioritized, we'd love that feedback, too, you know, I mean, otherwise, we're just kind of, you know, doing what we think makes most sense. But if, if, you know, we are here to serve, you know, everybody in the town, so if there's a specific priority, please don't hesitate to let us know what that is.
Just one other question, and I, I'm really excited to see the number of people who are here, and I don't see a number, a large number of business people here, particularly people who are on the Route 7 corridor, who are trying to develop on the Route 7 corridor, and I would really love to see an effort come out, because so much of that hope for development ends up being confrontational, and I would love to see those people be part of the visioning, if there's any way we can reach out in a stronger way.
We have a little, a little iron in that particular fire.
Great.
And so, what we, there was a, was it Burke and White, White and Burke, White and Burke, right? Okay, I always forget which one's which. Sent out something where they were offering to municipalities if they had some kind of project that they would like some free kind of, I don't know, just the impressions of developers, attorneys, you know, people involved in financing projects, et cetera. They were, they have this group that they put together, and they were offering like an hour and a half kind of, you know, sort of spitballing and giving you impressions on that. And so I immediately thought of the entire Route 7 corridor and the Form-Based Code regulations, which, as, you know, many people know, were only adopted by the select board as an optional overlay, which means nobody has bothered to use them, because the whole point of having Form-Based Code regulations is they bring predictability, so, but if they're only optional, they're not predictable by definition, right? So, anyway, in the meantime, since those regulations were adopted, you know, the, you know, the whole retail market has radically changed, and, you know, there's been some other things happening, the Rice Lumber Project, et cetera. So I thought we could use some fresh eyes, particularly if we don't have to pay them, you know, on our project, and just kind of get some feedback, and that's, so that's something that the, the planning commission is intending to kind of, hopefully they'll pick us and decide that, you know, we can be that municipality that gets the benefit of their insights, and, and then we can, you know, regardless, we can move on with that.
We did do a pretty active reach out.
I know, I've seen it everywhere.
Yeah, well, no, four months ago, five months ago, to the business community, specifically developers especially, and tried to do sort of little working meetings with them, charrettes or something with, with the code to try and get their feedback. And that was pretty successful, I guess, but, you know, it's, yeah, we can throw out, but, you know, depends how many people take us up when they offer to come and actually give their input.
It's not that you haven't tried, it's just what can we do?
So, yeah, anyway, nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Yeah. Well, if there's no other comments, we could close this topic and move on to our zoning talk.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for coming.
Happy for you.
Yeah, and, you know, tell your friends, tell your neighbors, come in two weeks, you know, remind people that...
Get something, get one of the girls over at the Shelburne News to take your notes, and just put something in there, results of how many citizens showed up, these were some of the great ideas we heard. You got any ideas, you know, open up communication that way.
Right.
And some, you know, because you read somebody else's, and they say, oh, you know, I have this idea.
Right.
It's a good idea, a little write-up.
Yeah.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Night, thanks, Judy.
Okay.
So Jason, do you, can you hear us okay?
Hi, I'm able to listen, I mean, it's online, but I didn't...
Okay. Well, do you want, do you want to, as a chair, take the lead on this section, or do you want me to?
Yeah, if you don't mind keeping the battle, I think it'll be more complicated.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Until I get the material on the screen. In your packets, you had included a memo, that memo had some proposed text, and it also had a proposed by-law change report, as well as some motions. If the idea of amending the zoning regs to change the definition of developable area and require PUDs for all residential subdivisions in the rural district is something that you want to move forward with, then you could move towards taking action on those motions. I have just a minute more before I get the material here for the world to see. So, yeah, the BEMO random basically used red line technique to show where the possible edits would be in 2110.36, that's where the definition of developable land is found in the zoning regulations. It would effectively remove item A, and item B would come A, but that would just strike slopes of 15% or more from the definition, and that would have the effect of essentially reducing the amount of undeveloped land on lots in the rural district, so by reducing the amount of... So by reducing the amount of undevelopable, the amount of developable land would go up. And so properties like that owned by the Minnies would become large enough to subdivide. Then, in the PUD end of things, Section 340 is at the end of the Rural District zoning chapter, and that's where currently the authorization for plan unit developments is found. It's where currently it says a plan unit development may be permitted in the rural Then, the proposed edit is to modify that second sentence to say, any subdivision proposal -- I'm sorry. Yeah, proposing to create more than one or more. So basically, any subdivision proposal, it could have been drafted differently, but any subdivision proposing to create one or more lots for residential or related development purposes must be treated as a PUD. So it's saying it's the law of the land essentially as far as residential subdivisions are concerned. Because of the way that the density requirements are spelled out in the rural district, I also am suggesting that you revisit 330.1 so that instead of where it says, single-family dwelling, the amount of land is five acres, it's as required by review under 1930. That's under the PUD regs. And why did I do that? It's because, really, by requiring all subdivisions to be reviewed as PUDs, the lot size will be determined as part of the PUD process. So you can't really say it's any specific number, it's whatever comes about as a result of a PUD review. Same thing goes for two-family. Other allowed uses would not be part of a residential PUD, and so that would stay five acres. So that's pretty much what that concerns. Those were the two areas. And then, like I said before, there's a draft by-law change report. That's something that the law requires that Planning Commission have if it decides to warn a public hearing. Are there questions, or?
I have a question about the first line, leaving it, a plan unit development residential may be permitted. Maybe that's kind of playing against itself, or double speak, or I don't know, just doesn't...
Well, the reason why, I almost changed it, but the reason I left it as "may" because it still has to be reviewed and approved by the Development Review Board. So if it says a plan unit development residential shall be permitted, it's creating this little bit of a place for someone to argue that, oh, PUD, it's kind of like site plan, you can't say no.
All right, I get it.
But you can be, you can be, you know, put through the meat grinder, but you can't say no. So it's permissive, it's permissive as long as you get through the process, is what it is. So I left it that way. I'm happy to defer to anybody else's wishes on that, but that was the thinking that I had applied. I thought that the question was truly answered by the second sentence.
Yeah, no, I like your explanation.
And I'm taking the mic away, but I didn't know whether or not, if there are any -- you guys all have mics. Do you want the mic?
I'm going to give the commission a chance first.
No, we've talked about this issue a lot.
I'm sure.
Yeah, so this is kind of distilling down what we talked about for the last couple of meetings.
Yeah, Natural Resources Committee discussed this last night, and our main concern was with the removal of the steep slopes as a condition. And, help me, Don, if I don't explain it well, but we were a little bit afraid that removing steep slopes in this place was opening the door to removing the other two conditions as well at another time, and that it becomes a little bit like spot zoning. So, in this case, we're trying to change this in order to make a smaller lot, and it doesn't seem like that's necessarily a small lot eligible to do what they want to do. It doesn't seem in the first instance as though that's prohibitive or something that sounds awful. But if the next person comes in and doesn't like the idea of the other two conditions, and we make a change for that, too, then where do all these regulations go?
Well, I might reply to that would be that the other two regulations are really, you know, that the Class II wetlands, that's regulated by the state, so we don't have any say in that. And then, you know, the, you know, as you know, the flood hazard regulations are becoming tighter and tighter. So that's also something that is, you know, both the, you know, the, but both the state and the feds. I mean, the town would, we participate in the National Flood Insurance Program because we have, you know, flood hazard regulations and certain things, so we would never want to jeopardize our standing in that. And our ability to participate in that program is because we have these regulations. So the steep slope seemed like something that seemed reasonable. And also, my understanding is the Development Review Board through the PUD process will be actually creating a building envelope. So we wanted to, so what does this get in terms of benefits for the town, not just these particular property owners? Well, it allows growth to be focused in an area where it already exists, so that's one of the benefits. And in theory, that would prevent somebody from then going out into some undeveloped part of the rural areas. Would provide, hopefully, a disincentive for that. So that was kind of our, you know, our thinking. It was a little along the lines of, you know, thinking about, like, some of the conditions that we would imagine would be in place where it would make sense to have a hamlet, for example. You know, where do you want to try and focus the growth? So it, you know, on existing lots seemed preferable to us than incentivizing somebody to go out and, you know, find 40 acres someplace and develop that.
Yeah, and I'm sort of sensitive.
I'm sensitive to that, and we just wondered, and we did a little brainstorming around it, but we weren't, we didn't have the time after the rest of our meeting to be able to go into a lot of detail. But we did wonder if there might not be another way to be able to achieve what we want to achieve without disengaging the idea that we don't want people, particularly in the rural zone, building where there are steep slopes. And that it kind of downplays the importance of the geography. So that was our main concern. And is there another way to achieve what we're trying to achieve?
50% or more won't preclude anybody from build, there's nothing that's, this was sort of a way to, like, backdoor way to kind of stop these lots from being divided, you know? So an engineer could come, yeah, I mean, an engineer could come in and you could build a, you know, there are spots where they could build on a much deeper slope, so it's...
That's what it was about. Never prohibited anybody from building on slopes, so that shouldn't really be part of the discussion.
Yeah.
It's, it was just, you know, the first two are physical in nature, and the 15% was created by a planning commission.
Yeah, I remember that process.
To contain. The same time they did that, they created the development that allowed your development to occur. They increased, or increased the amount of houses that could be built in the...
I think it was an issue at Harrington Village as well.
Stormwater. Yeah, they did have an issue with slopes there, too. But theirs were much more, much steeper. There was actual structural in nature. I, you know, I've kind of been attached to the 15% too, but I'm letting go because I know it's the mood, I mean, this couple has been coming in for three years now. And I think we're just, we're only doing the half-step here, though. I think we should be doing a little more, as I said before, but there's a hurry to get this done. I think we should be changing open space from 30 to 50%, which would give us a lot more of what we want. Doing that doesn't take the open space away from the owner, they can still use it for agriculture, but it does give the DRB power to use some of that open space for the buffers that we want. And the other thing I would love to have included would be to use, to direct the DRB to use the open space for the targeted resources that we want to protect. I feel like that would be key to be in this, what we're doing here. But I also agreed not to add these issues, so I'm bringing them up this. I think it's really important that we do this zoning piece as soon as possible and not someday in the future.
I like those provisions that you have mentioned, those additional provisions. I think that makes sense. And, I mean, I don't have a problem with increasing the density on those lots, as my concern is that it's done in a way that doesn't impact resources. And I'd like to have a strong, I'd like that to be as strong, specified as strongly as possible, and it seems like what you're suggesting would achieve that. Because, you know...
It wouldn't increase density, no. It would allow the density, the five acres, to be used without the 15%.
Right, well, right now, they're not, they can only, they're unable to subdivide, right?
But what we could do is, the DRB could take this 10-acre lot and say, okay, we're going to allow you to build on these four acres, and you need to be, they need to be closer to the road, and you can share a driveway for a portion.
Right.
And you've got a large wetland over here, so a couple acres would be used as a buffer there. That kind of thing. Or any number of things, depending on the, you know, how the lot is constructed.
Well, it allows clustering. It allows clustering in the spot where the development makes sense for, you know, where it can be sustained. But the rest of it is not. And my understanding is before we had this, you know, we didn't have a lot of control over where any of this happened.
It wasn't defined quite enough, I think.
Right.
It's open-ended, and I don't blame the DRB for that, because, you know, if the right lawyer comes in, they can convince you pretty much of anything.
So what are your two specific other things? You talked about 50%, 30%.
Well, right now, it's 30% open space in a PUD. And the open space isn't necessarily...
And if any PUD?
There's a, it's this language that says, yes, if it's a PUD, there will be 33% open space. That used to be, the zoning regs used to have a higher requirement, it was as high as 50% on the water, and I'm going to try to find that.
Okay. When we, the Williston document we looked at, they use 75 now. Heinsberg does it differently. They have a requirement based on what type of road you're on in the rural area. It's either eight, nine, 10, or 12 acres, depending on, and I don't know which type roads inflict which size, but...
So like a primary, secondary, tertiary road kind of thing?
Right, right.
Another important reaction we had last night, it came across as a possible major policy change as to how the rural district would be developed. Dean gave us a guesstimate that somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 lots might be impacted by this, which would allow 25 more housing units if that many lots can be further subdivided, which makes our rural district less rural and unlike what we're trying to move toward in the new planning document.
But, but I guess I would, you know, I would disagree in the sense that what it hopefully will do is disincentivize the creation, I mean, all that pressure to develop would go somewhere in the rural area, right? So this way, it's being co-located along where existing development is, and those are places that are already, have potentially limited use for habitat because they've already been compromised, right, by development? So we're keeping that out of the big areas that are more contiguous, remaining existing areas. So we were thinking in terms of the, your goals for the open space plan. I mean, ideally, all these people are going to want to go in the growth area, right? I mean, you know, ideally. But we don't have any control over whether that could happen. So the next best thing seemed to be to focus them in the rural areas where there already was some growth, rather than encouraging them to go and do something that was, you know, you know, in some area that was completely undeveloped, building roads and all that stuff through there.
I'm wondering, before you move forward on this, however, do we want to take a more specific, hard look at those 25 lots? Where do they land? You know, what are the resources on them, you know, are, on and on and on, are they woodland areas?
Well, we did look at some of that, and we were looking mostly in terms of lot size and, you know, where they were located. And to us, it seemed like they were located up along the busy streets primarily. So it may just logically made some sense to us, but, you know, that's, that was just our opinion. I mean, you guys have a different focus and a more finer-grained approach to this, so...
One other thing we could do is to allow the sale of the development right. And in order to do that, I kind of talked, just done this a little bit last time, but we'd have to offer more than a single development right. So if you took a five-acre lot in the rural area, which is worth more money than what a lot would cost in form-based zoning, we, so we take a single lot out of the rural area and give them two units in a, in an apartment complex or something, or condos in the rural district where we want growth, and I...
You mean, in the form-based code district?
Right.
Yeah.
And, you know, I was one that has always been in kind of keeping heights low, but I think we, when you look at the buildings that are going up, it's not feasible to build three-story buildings, residential buildings anymore. So I think if we're going to draw a developer into that area, there's only maybe three or four areas where we could put those buildings, but we're probably going to have to go to four- or five-story buildings. But the advantage of those upper stories are going to be, the buildings are going to be worth more. So it's, it's one way of getting the lots out of the rural district.
I'm trying to get a hint along, is, are you saying, Dick, that you would like to see further edits to the PUD part of the proposal before it gets warned for public hearing?
Well, no, I was just saying that I felt this is really important, and I wanted to, I was looking more to get it, get us to work on the PUD, but I wouldn't mind throwing these two things in if we could do it and pass it tonight. I don't want to slow this down because I know there's some sort of immediacy to the process.
So the two things, one would be 33% versus 50%, what was the second one?
To direct the DRB to use the open space for targeted resources such as wetlands, buffers, connections between wildlife corridors, I don't know what else.
They would be directed to make sure that the 50% was emphasized, those resources, emphasized to protect those resources.
Right. But not to prohibit the, you know, owners of property, say you had a Christmas tree farm or something there, not to prohibit them from using it still. You would still have the right to continue to...
A Christmas tree farm wouldn't be a residential PUD.
No, but I mean, if there were five acres of Christmas trees, we wouldn't say they can't use them anymore because it was open space. We're, I think what we don't, we allow them to keep open space, if I understand it pretty much, our PUD. We don't take, we don't say that they have to commit this to another lot like Williston does. Williston says that the open space will be a separate lot.
It's what we do in Westford.
It's interesting, when we wrote the first open space plan back in 2005, we had a whole set of recommendations that this Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission looked at what we did, and they absorbed some of it into the plan before the plan went to the Select Board. And a lot of those things got adopted. But we also had recommended regulations, and one of them had to do with the nature of the open space in a PUD or in any development that was designating open space. And what we had been seeing was that there might be 50 feet at the back of everybody's lot that really didn't mean anything in terms of the natural resources. The Select Board at the time refused to incorporate that into the plan, but I think that's part of where Dick is going.
That's what we were talking about earlier.
Yeah. But the other thing that came up last night, and I'm not sure I understand the whole concept fully, if I can try to explain it, and maybe Dean or Don can help to do it, is... is can we achieve the same thing without eliminating the steep slopes by changing the ultimate size of the lot that constitutes the PUD for those smaller properties?
Do you repeat that question?
That's what I'm not, that's not what I'm not expressing very well.
Are you saying something about this idea of the, having a cutoff so that if you have a lot that's 15 acres or less, then it, it gets, it gets passed undevelopable land area, and so it could be subdivided? It would be treated as 15 acres of land, but once you get over 15 acres, then you start factoring in the developable land area, in which case someone like the Minnies would have the ability to subdivide, because they have an absolute total greater than 10. I think, is that what you're...
Yes, I think that was what I was trying to express. Is there a way that we can do it without disappearing the concept of protecting the steep slopes and still make it happen?
I mean, that had been one of the options that had been discussed in the past, but that wasn't what was agreed to by the group last time.
What was? An option?
An option that has been considered by the planning commission in the past has been to modify the regulations, but instead of changing the definition of developable land area, it was to carve out a bypass for lots less than 15 acres.
Right. It's basically what I proposed to start with when we started this.
I was just going to say that I, I appreciate what Dick is trying to do with changing 33% to 50% and, and directing the DRB. There are, there's some aspects of the current wording that are a thin read, basically, and Dick himself has said, you know, you get a lawyer in, they'll convince the DRB of anything. The, the language that's in paragraph C, that's part of the blue highlighted, is already a little bit mushy. The following guideline, guideline, shall be used in determining the appropriate percentage of open space land within PRDs, 33% of total acreage. It's not the most bulletproof language, saying there's an absolute requirement of 33%. So changing it from 33 to 50 may just make people fight harder about what that number is. And so if you are thinking that it should change from 33 to 50, I, it would have been nice to know that we would go there, because it might be the right time to improve that language. And also, I think some of what Dick is getting at about directing the DRB, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what, what is that wording exactly going to be?
Right.
So that we can sure, be sure that we have it, and maybe Mary Anne has, has got it, and it's a slam dunk, but...
I mean, they sort of covers it in four up there, right? Open space should be, should preserve agricultural, recreational, and natural resources. I mean, that's what we're saying. And since you could potentially add more things to be, to that.
Right. Must preserve agricultural, recreational, or natural resources when present?
Right.
Or serve as buffers to... Sorry?
Who's defining that? Those items?
Very often, we see developments coming in, and, oh, we sent our expert out and did a study, and there are no natural resources there. Okay, well, don't have to worry about that, then.
But I mean, I think that's where the lang, I'm just pointing out, that's where the language would potentially have to change, to say, to your effect, must preserve, and then we'd have to delink, specific, specify the things that must be protected.
Yeah. It's just kind of a tough thing to do on the fly.
Right. No, I mean, I think the options we have are, you know, delay this, what we talked about, to incorporate the changes, or say this is a step forward that we want to keep moving on, and we have a few other things that we are working on in parallel and also change at later day.
I don't know if it's a major thing to do, to change this language, if we could just stretch it one more time period, one more meeting. I think we could accomplish what we want to, and then we wouldn't really have to feel the pressure to come back to do this, work on this later on.
Well, I...
It's effectively doing...
You, you've raised a lot of the issues you want to add and change.
Absolutely.
In last meeting, you kind of did, but then we come and we keep talking, so I feel like you gotta...
I've, I've been trying to do this for three years.
But you gotta come up with, you've got to come up with specific changes you want, specific language, and then we can, we can react to it.
Right.
So I think you come up with your list that you, you think is interesting to address. I don't want to speak for you guys, but I feel like we'd be willing to listen.
I'm curious for your perspective on this other option of increasing from, increasing the lot size to 15, this, the one that they've just pointed out. Is that option an alternative to this amendment of, like, eliminating the slopes, or is that complementary?
Do you stop the language of that other amendment? So let me see, I think I have it. So, yeah, last, was that last meeting you talked about?
I think so, I think last meeting.
Yeah.
If we can just solve this problem with that, that would be probably good enough.
Well, the option was 10 acres to, 10.1 acres to, or 10, above 10 acres to less than 15.
Yeah, it was basically, single-family dwelling on a lot subdivided from parent parcel of less than 15 acres, where such parent parcel existed in separate and non-affiliated ownership from any adjoining parcel as of effective added by law, five acres, you know, so...
And the reason that lost two years ago was because some members felt it was discriminatory towards other lot owners.
If you were larger than 15?
Yeah. Well, that was partly the reason.
Right.
But doesn't any zoning regulation discriminate against people who aren't included in it?
I think, yes.
We lost Jason again, huh?
Oh, you see, so there is a history to this. You tried this, and it didn't work out.
It was a tie, actually.
Oh.
Has the composition changed since then?
Was, was longer than two years ago, I think. I don't remember when it was. It was, it was a while ago. Yeah, the bowl boards changed. Kate, you were here, weren't you? Yeah, you were here.
Yeah, I'm just looking at how Westford does it. And they have a provision in here that says, "Development must, must not disturb areas with significant natural resources as defined by these regulations. If the property to be developed includes rare, threatened, or endangered species or significant natural communities, see town map. The applicant must submit a natural resource inventory prepared by a qualified professional as part of the application, and must implement appropriate conservation design approaches to protect the identified natural resources on the property." So it's, you know, it's got some teeth in there. And we have, we're a more rural town, so, you know, it's 25% slopes is what we are really careful about. But we have erosion control and LID standards, you know, that you have to maintain, so we get it, we get it that way. And we also protect ledge-out croppings. So, but it's all very, you know, it's like really clear what the expectations are. And we require as-built drawings and designer certifications at every step of the way. So it's, it's, you know, it's, it's clear, but, you know, lengthy, the process.
Just, I'm refreshing my memory from looking at, so we, we talked about that idea of that 10 to 15, they'll carve out, but I guess what we ended up all agreeing to last time was the fact that if, if everything, one lot or becomes PUD, it gives us the ultimate control. So that you have, you know, a site plan review, you have much more control. So it sort of gave us the ability to solve this issue, not have to play some funny thing with lots between this size and that size, but have, and, and so it was most elegant, simple, and kind of universal. Does that...
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, just, just a real-life experience from the town where I work as a zoning administrator. Somebody did some clearing on a lot that was a single-family lot, which had, it was a very large lot, just happened to be a single-family lot, but had it been a PUD, they would not have been allowed to do the clearing that they did, you know, for view, for views and things like that. So there was more oversight. Now, you know, are, are the regulations sufficiently, you know, prescriptive about what those are? That's a whole other question. And my guess is, we could do more, but, you know, it, this was the sort of thinking, you know, that we wanted to, we were...
Yeah, I think, we, we didn't have any issues in terms of encouraging the PUD, because I think that does give us a whole lot more control. We were just a little worried about taking away the recognition of the steep slope, because any engineer can come in and figure out how to build on a steep slope, and that just sort of opens the door to a lot of changes that can affect the geography.
But again, the steep slope was only put in there as a way to kind of make a lot seem smaller than it was.
Which was why we, we came up with, or sort of, why we sort of caught on to the idea of maybe just changing the lot size that, that was required, as opposed to addressing the steep slope, so that it wouldn't become an issue in another region of the town where the steep slope mattered a lot more.
Right.
The other option, what he did, that was to revert to 10-acre lots.
Right. Which is what, in these guys' case, that was the existing rules when they bought.
There was lots they bought, right. And they bought those not because of zoning as much as because of Act 250, I think, that that, they're required to, maybe like six lots or seven lots, and they had to be...
Stay loose for...
What was it?
Oh, yeah, it's the 10 for loophole for waste water.
Right, right.
That drove a lot of them.
So it sounds like the decision we have to make tonight is, do we move forward with motion and warrant on what we had talked about before, or are we going to delay the process to include Dick's other changes? Jason, can you hear Elvis?
It was a lot easier to deal when I wasn't on the phone and just listening online, but from what I'm gathering, I essentially agree with you. I thought we had this nailed down last time, and this is what we were going to, to, to vote on to keep it looking. And if we're going to change it, I, I feel like this has been a one in a lot of the discussion, it's not going to get solved today. So that's, that's really the decision. I don't, I don't know if you feel that this is something that could be, we know we're going to come back to this topic and expand on it. This was a stopgap station. I, I, my personal feeling is that development on the foot shouldn't be an issue. I think architecturally, a lot can happen. You post streets, I just read, they're going to get developed. And as long as we have things in place where DRB would need to make sure that any development plans that are proposed don't have adverse impacts on, you know, land for a variety of reasons. I, St. John's foot is not a reason, uh, foot is not a reason not to build if you have good construction and good awareness of the surrounding land, it's part of erosion, erosion and that sort of thing.
Are we considering viewscapes as part of protections?
Say that again?
Are we considering viewscapes as part of our natural resources protections?
I, I think that's, that's a valid point to ensure that the DRB is looking at those sorts of things, but, I mean, we honestly could spend four hours talking about this. I mean, what we have in, the reason that foot was in there, I think, if I understand correctly, in the first place, had to do with a way of controlling density. It, it wasn't necessarily just don't build on foot.
Yeah, so that's where we're wondering, is this a more, larger policy change, allowing an additional 25 building units?
It's, that's a great picture. Yes, there is a potential, well, that picture that Dean put up, and the reason that I think that we, the consensus was to go ahead and move forward, is because there were 25 lots that were potentially impacted by this decision, but I don't believe that anybody had, I don't believe that there was any risk that we're going to have 25 property owners coming to us and, hey, we want to subdivide right now.
Never say never. That's why we're trying to get to a better town plan.
Yeah, and again, I mean, from, from the discussion last time, this was, and, and I would also encourage, Dick, as Andrew did earlier, to, like, I know you have a lot of thoughts on this, so really just get them down, and let's have something that the groups can react to. And even as a, a way of prepping for that, we could have a less than four member groups that gets together to talk about this, the way we had done on, with traffic, for example, or transportation. Where we can kick ideas around and have firm steps, because all this is doing is prolonging what the original intent was around the Minnies.
Just being careful.
That sounds like a good idea.
Well, I mean, I guess I'd ask you, I mean, I always love getting your opinion on these things. Do you feel like, I mean, are we, I, I guess my sense from when we saw that and went through it last year, that this is not opening up a huge can of worms, this is going to create massive amounts of development, but it does, it is a change.
It is a change.
It's more than 25 lots, too, because if we remove it 15% from everything, then the larger lots that have, may have larger areas of 15% or higher develop, undevelopable land will also increase the lot numbers that become available.
It is a change. The commission last time seemed to have reached a place where it was comfortable with the trade-off. Would, you know, it is a policy change, but it seemed comfortable with the idea that if there was a slight backing off on the density controls, but turning up of the controls through PUD, that overall, the community was getting a benefit. That's what it seemed like, and that's what the text that was drafted seemed to do. I had, I'll, I guess I'll call you out, Dick. I'd been pushing you before the last meeting, you know, try to get something specific, because if we can react to it, I think there's a greater chance of it being included.
I will live up to what I said. I will vote for this. I don't believe it's the right thing to do, but I will vote for it tonight, because I said I would. And I brought this up because I wanted to impress upon the board the importance of having a meeting about changing the PUD regs. It's really important, because we are opening up a can of worms, any way you want to look at it, that's what this is. So we, you know, I would love to say, well, we'll put it off for a couple of weeks and deal with it. But I'll vote for it tonight, because I said I would.
The PUD section is a section of the regs. I, I know that there are members of the Natural Resources Committee who've made some pretty specific recommendations about how they would be changed, and at the time this was being discussed, I brought that up, but I also acknowledged that it wasn't going to be something that you're going to manage to accomplish in the timeframe that I was understanding you were working with, as far as the Minnies, but down the road, you, you'd definitely want to come back.
I was given two days to come up with something, and in the work schedule I had, I wasn't able to do that.
So the, so the question is, you know, ultimately, are you comfortable as a body going forward with a stopgap, but you commit? I mean, this happens with bodies all the time. You'll have to commit to come back, or you take another run at it. And you could take another run at it. I mentioned there are some issues with how open space is required. That wording could be improved. But then you're, you're moving in this direction of saying, well, boy, should we just revise it wholesale and make it really what we want it, you know, or model it after a community is already doing a bang-up job? I mean, you could do that. But that's, that was much more ambitious than what I understood you were trying to do before.
Right.
But I do apologize for my part, I'm only catching at the third word. My, my position for what it was though is, I, I did think that we had a consensus last time, if we're talking about impact to natural resources and other considerations, that we as a group, that I wasn't able to catch all of what the concerns were. me, it was that I wasn't able to catch all of what the concerns were, but if there are concerns that we feel are legitimate, then maybe we just take another one, in a future meeting, and if it's, you know, that's the right thing to do.
It, it sounds to me like it makes sense to postpone this, to take, for Dick, for you to go back and, and put some of the provisions in, I'd like to see more of your thoughts on what those would be, and, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with, with enabling more dense use of these lots from a purely numerical standpoint, but I think it's really important that the, we have in place regulations that, that will, in no uncertain terms, protect the resources that we want to protect, so that that development happens in that way. And I don't know if that means, you know, having an actual open space lot, or there, what the mechanism is for that, that's what's done in other places. So, I, I, I would like to, I support doing this, but I'd like to do it with a little, you know, not in such a rushed way. It sounds like we, we can make some improvements to the PUD regulations anyway. So, that, that's just my thought. And, and the other thing, just one last thing, I think this is a complex issue, and I would love to know what, you know, Suzanne and Stephen think about this too, and they're not here.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd fall in Kate's camp at this point, I mean, I feel like we've uncovered enough things that would be better, that I'd rather make one good change than a couple little, you know, you always run the risk of saying we're gonna come back to something, and then we don't, we get sidetracked by other things or distracted, so, I guess there's value, you know, in, if we're gonna make these changes, to do it in the best possible way.
I, I just want to build off of that, in terms of the targeted approaches that we wanna draft the language, if we could include like erosion control and the slope management issues in that, that could be also a good way to kind of like address the issues they have, because I think with more and more flooding coming our way, erosion control is really key, we need to account for that. I mean, in addition to like wetland protection and these other issues, right?
So, you're talking about tightening up the flood pain, flood plane?
Yeah.
I'm not sure how we do that.
But slopes are linked with some of these erosion control issues, and it seems to me that the degree of slopes that we account for could affect that.
So, I am willing to work on this, I do have more time now, fortunately, or unfortunately, my business is slowing down finally, so I feel like I have a few minutes to breathe, if that's-
Yeah, so, Dick, um, take it, like, at the West, at Westford's regulations, they have a unified bylaw, and they have some pretty straightforward, it's erosion control and LID-oriented engineering standards, and it's, it's pretty specific, you know, what you need to do, you know.
Okay, I don't know how far we want to go, as far as we can go in a short amount of time, is that what we're saying?
Well, I think if we're gonna make a change, we should make the best possible change, right, so-
All right, so I'll do what I can, and I'll try to get it out the end of next week, and then maybe everybody could just work, see what they don't like, or like, if that's-
Yeah, and I'm just thinking, there may be some nuggets in there, that, that, you know, in your experience on the DRB, are like, oh, that's a good idea, maybe that could be something that we include, you know, nothing, I'm not thinking something super complicated.
Right, but it's just simplifying it for the DRB.
How do we, how do we tinker with what we have and improve it?
It's not as much directing them as giving them direction.
But clarifying it so lawyers cannot manipulate that, the vagueness, that's, that's much like in the current test.
Yeah, quantify, everything quantified.
So, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from July 26th. I had no issues with it.
While you're thinking about that, I just want to say thanks for being open-minded and listening.
You're welcome. Any commissioner comments on the meeting, the minutes from last time?
Fine to me, are you looking for a motion?
Sure.
So moved.
So, minutes approved, if all favor say aye?
Aye.
Jason, is, are you still there?
Jason?
He may.
He might have dropped off. Uh, any other-
Aye on the minutes? We might have fallen asleep with the phone on.
Have us unmute. Well, I think we have a quorum to approve anyway, so, yeah. Any other business correspondence?
Thanks, everyone.
Did you have anything else you had for us? Okay.
We're gonna talk about the MPG's next time or something?
Oh, I had distributed, yes, I had distributed information on that, if, I had asked if anybody had items to submit at the hour, I don't expect that there would be really any substantive or meaningful discussion, but do please propose any ideas that you have.
Well, how about working on rural PUD requirements? I mean, that, that, that seems like a kind of pressing need, so, you know.
That's a great idea, the question I guess that raises is, well, the, the, the timing would be such that that project would get started at the earliest mid-January. Now, are you saying you don't want to?
Oh, no, no, I, I was thinking of that as a totally separate thing. I think we can kind of come up with some tweaks that would make us feel comfortable about, you know, helping the Miniers out with their project.
Okay.
But, but this discussion suggests, has suggested to me that, you know, maybe we could be doing more, and that, you know, we have this wonderful open space plan and all this information in the town plan, and then, you know, we have regulations that are kind of more like this, you know, so could we sort of, you know, bring them up a little bit?
Yeah, and I think that's a great idea, the, the reaction it prompts is that, rather than identifying one specific topic within the zoning regs, that the situation that we're in, I think that may be well-received if our application said, we're wrapping up our plan, and we would like to get a grant to help underwrite the costs of crafting a series of zoning changes that would be implementing its recommendations.
Perfect, that sounds great.
And the timing would line up, so, and we can use rural PUDs as an example, but we wouldn't commit to just one thing.
Well, for example, like the, like the cultural idea of a P, a cultural PUD, what would that be, you know? That, that was, seemed to be, you know, very much something people favored tonight, so, you know, what, you know, what does, what does that look like, what could that be?
That's essentially what was done back around 2007, when we got a grant.
Yeah, yeah.
But did they discover, did they work on hamlet idea at that point in time as well, or?
Well, that could be another type of PUD.
But I thought like, like, we should really kind of like look into this planning grant can identify like practical places where you can build hamlets, but have the cultural integration.
So, if you're talking about planning, modifying the zoning regulations to incorporate hamlets, I would argue, Asim, that you haven't done the planning to know how to do the zoning that would implement hamlets. There, there isn't yet a clear consensus about where the location of, where would hamlets be, how would they be scaled? There was some discussion about the criteria that some came over from the housing committee, but if you really wanted to pursue hamlets, I think that's more of a planning study than a zoning study, or maybe you try to wrap it up and you keep everything focused on hamlets, from the conceptualization to some proposed zoning changes.
Yeah, I, I would say like start with the planning, and then we can go to the zoning, but I think having more concrete vision about, like, what, what, what would the hamlets look like, integrated with the cultural resources of what people want, and kind of like, I think that would be a, a step that we can take, and then go towards the zoning and modifying these like more concrete changes, but I think visualizing-
So, you're thinking of a planning vision for the rural area, kind of thing?
Exactly, like having them own this, like with the GIS maps and looking at like exactly, maybe even talking with the people who live there, who own the land, and seeing that, okay, well, this is where you want these hamlets, and this is whether they're willing to integrate culture, what are the options for integrating culture? I mean, I think that would be something that would be-
So, one of the things that I can do with this input is to go back and check, because I'm, I'm trying to remember whether or not this is a year where the emphasis is on plans or on implementation.
I see.
But they do, they do vary those from year to year, and that may give us a sense of which of those two directions we should think about going in, and if it's, if it is neither of them, or if it's a year where they're entertaining both, well, then we can put together some concepts. We'll need to get clarity on which direction you want to go in, probably, yeah, probably at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Because we have to get, we have to get estimates from consultants who would tell us what the cost of doing that kind of study would be. The bylaw changes, it's fairly straightforward, the study having to do with hamlets would be a little bit more challenging, because the consultant, you know, there's no standardized framework for, for planning that.
But that's where we can really utilize the grant for kind of like making our vision more concrete.
Right, but what I'm saying, Asim, is to go to a consultant, to say, this is what we want, how much will it cost, there's a conversation, it's more extended in terms of a conversation, so that they know, oh, this is what I think you would need to do in order to do that type of study, and then they'll tell you how much it will cost, and then we can put that amount into the grant. But we can't do the grant without an estimate that's backed up by a consultant, or by the Regional Planning Commission. I'm just saying it's a bit more complicated to develop the estimates for that type of work than for an amendment or a series of amendments where the consultant can, can anticipate pretty clearly what it would take. But I think the idea of contrasting, you know, fairly, you know, concrete zoning stuff with a more planning-oriented project in the, in the rural area is a great contrast.
And then next week on the 14th, there's this update, updating the select board on the plan?
Yes, that is something that, while earlier this afternoon, when we had the session, Josh was also at that session, a member of the select board, he was emphasizing the idea that there should be announcements related to the town plan at every select board meeting, tend to be a few more people, maybe more people watching, but what we hope to accomplish by having that presentation is bringing more select board members into the process, so that we can, the commission can hear from them and-
As early as possible.
As early as possible.
Yeah, and so, Jason will-
I'm hoping that he will be able to attend, if he's not, or if anyone is certainly, should be there, if you can be there, yeah.
Yeah, I just had something on my calendar note to myself to potentially go.
To make that.
And we'll get the agenda for that meeting?
That agenda will probably be issued tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah, so we'll know about the time when that could come up.
Yeah, I have seen a draft, but I don't know if that draft had times on it.
Right, I just, I'm at, I'm gonna be in Waterbury until about 6:30, so, like, hopefully it's a little later in the meeting than I feel to make it.
I think, I think it is late, it's lower on the list, so that would mean later.
Okay.
But as far as time, I don't know.
Right.
I should know tomorrow, I will send that out.
Okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, I'm not too worried. Motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Aye.
Second?
Second.
So, move, move my Kate second by Asim, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.